Calling the meeting board. If you have one of these, please turn it to silence. And join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, united on indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. I said it was 3:01 when I called the meeting board. And for the record, our district attorney, Tony Pierce, is here. Supervisor Tinkle, supervisor Banks, supervisor Feinberg, supervisor Guy, supervisor Blair, they're all present. And our district manager, Chris Shoemaker, is present. So that's, that's the workshop. Can you go over to you, Chris?
Okay. And I think Kenny and I are just gonna come take a seat right up front and just have kind of an open dialogue for a few minutes. If that's okay with you folks. What we wanted to talk about today was mostly some of the expenses that have been coming up, some foreseen and some unforeseen in the utility arena to do with operation and maintenance, and some of the plans that we have, and a couple other ideas we have on funding and keeping our work going on. And then after that, we could also, if y'all want to talk about any other type of funding or any issues, we'll have time during that work. We're going to here take about 15 minutes. But Kenny, if you want to talk about some of the maintenance challenges that we've been facing.
Um, I'm gonna stand by. This year, we've been going at a real high pace for, as far as repairs, work. We've also added a lot of staff, and with that comes, we've discovered a lot more problem issues that we are coming across. I just want to give you just a couple quick issues of what's going on, and if we keep, it looks like we're gonna keep heading in this pace. It's the more the older communities, 20, 25, 30-year communities, we're running into some real issues. And they're mul-, well, for the first one, the meter box. In these communities, especially if they're hitting about the 20, 20-year mark, Waterford Village, Pine Crest, Pinewood Lakes, Mahogany Run, these meter boxes are encased in trees, literally encased in trees. It can be a half an hour to swap that box out and get it up and running again. It can be eight hours. It can be 10 hours. It can be, it can take three professionals, seven, eight hours to get through these boxes to the point where we can actually start to do the repairs. And on that, they used a Mueller, on the older boxes, a Mueller check valve that is starting to fail a lot. Especially in the older communities, what's happening is the 90-degree check valve is breaking. It's falling back into the actual meter and freezing it. So what happens is, on our side, it'll, the MIU, or the unit in the box, will call us and tell us that there's problem. We're stuck. So we'll go out there and we'll determine, yup, check valve's broken. We've gotta go in there and fix it. It's encased in a 30-year-old oak tree that can take just hours and hours and hours to change.
Why did I think that we put new meters in every location?
We did. It's the boxes that the meters are in.
How many 30-year-old oak tree go around it so fast?
They was already there. They, they were installed that way, on the, on the center, with the, with the box.
We didn't install boxes. They installed meters inside the old box.
The boxes were not switched out. It's the meters, the meter boxes that the meters are sitting in that is causing us as one of the, as a major problem. It's starting to turn into a major problem, a daily problem with these lines breaking. If it breaks on the customer's side, it's, you know, it's a customer, it's on the PDC side. If it breaks on our side, it's, say, it could be anywhere from a half an hour, a quick fix, go in there, we can get right at the line, sleeve it, we're done. It could be six hours, eight hours. That's a very common occurrence. Just the part to get the, for the check valve had to be special ordered, and it's, it's only $32 to do the check valve. There again, we get into this tree, it could take us three hours just to get to that check valve to replace it. So, and if we're doing that, we're taking the box out. So this is happening a lot. Sewer cleanouts, again, with the older communities where they do not have sewer cleanouts. They, it goes straight into the sanitary sewer line. If we get breaks, we're getting a lot of breaks, we're getting a lot of cracks. There are, we are going to, say, this year alone, we've spent upwards of $30,000 just in the cleanup repairs, two of which were majors in Stony Brook. And then we get into the Gateway Greens on Fairway Isles. We had a customer call about a sewer backup, so we go out and hammer the line, there's no sewer cleanout on our side, so we have to go up to the, into their property and come down. Her line is completely compromised. But as we go out, we go all the way out to the sanitary sewer, and we found a major break. Water is just literally pouring into the sewer, and that's a part of what we're talking about here. We put, I've got three people that have come out, two just outright declined to do the work, they just don't, they're not interested, and one came in at about $75,000. I have two more coming in next week that are gonna look at sleeving the line, which will, will, you know, pretty, a great thing if it could happen.
S- sleeving the line?
Yes, they wanna look at, look at going in and sleeving.
For the service line?
Yeah. If it's possible.
How do you do it? I never seen it done.
That's, that's what professionals, that's what the professionals say. It's at, it's at the, where the, the lateral goes into the sanitary sewer, we have it on, we filmed it.
There's a break there, you got a problem.
Yeah. And it, the, the actual break is sitting at 11 feet, so that brings in all kinds of issues. The lake levels surrounding that are, are a big issue. The contractors outright just do not want to do it. They're just, they're not, they're not equipped to handle it. The one that did gave us a very, very high bid. Lift stations today, we had a major, we've had a major problem with the Thurl Scout lift station. We had, it turned into about a $6,000 repair. The floor at the base elbow kicked out, so we had to do a major repair there. And we're running into this over and over and over and over and over again. So if we keep going at this pace, we're going to, we're gonna run out of money, basically. It's, what will we fund it? We're going through it so fast with all these repairs. Now, we've hired, with our new hires and our staff, a lot of this, we're able, not a lot, but we're starting to be able to handle ourselves. But the sanitary sewers, specialty lift stations, that's something we hire a professional contractor to do. The $1,000 to $3,000 repairs that we're getting, you know, once a week, twice a week, three times a week, we never know. We had two breaks in one day. We can start to handle this, but this is, again, we run into another one where we need to reel in. We have all the things that we need out in our system that can break, that we can keep in-house and in stock is invaluable. We've been doing preliminaries on lift stations, on how, what it would cost, the total amount of inventory we have, what we would need through the water, through the sewer, through the irrigation system, the components, the electrical components, so that every, basically everything we have in the field, we have in our shop and we can replace. If we do not have it in, in stock, it comes at a premium. So if I need a, a certain part, for the lift stations, we've got a lot of that, but we're talking general, all-around inventory that we can keep in-house. And it is very, it is expensive, and there's a lot of it. For our system, there is a lot of inventory we would like to bring into the shop and have on hand. You say, if we can keep most of these repairs in-house, you know, in the end, we end up saving a great deal of money. But at the rate we're going and what we're seeing every day, we're just blazing through our reserve, our, our budget of money.
But, but the stuff that you're doing, that your firm's got to do in-house, wouldn't entail whatsoever what you got on Fairway.
Yeah. No, 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 we're not, we, we don't.
We don't have the equipment to do that.
Even the big, even the big utility companies, a lot of times, we'll just sub that out, let the professional contractors do that every day.
That's tough.
Yeah. Sanitary sewer, anything with sewer is bad. But sanitary sewer, when you have a break at that level.
In the middle of the street.
It's serious, it's, it's bad.
Kenny, I think Mrs. Blair, he had a question.
I do, I have two. The first one was about the boxes that are in the trees.
Yes.
When they put the meters in, did they notify you those boxes were in the trees?
Yes, so they're, they're, they're not in position to do anything about it.
And the second thing is, can you make a list of all the things that you think you need in-house?
Yes, we, we've been working on that.
So they'll, and then?
And we're doing a lot of comparisons. We're looking at, you know, multi across the board and where we, if you buy them both, you know, that kind of, that sort of thing, you get much better rates if you buy them both.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was just gonna follow up a little bit. You know, when you talk about these trees, it's like I had a resident in Stony Brook that called and said, my sidewalk's lifted two, two inches, it's a tripping hazard, you need to get out and fix it. So you look at it, yeah, it's our sidewalk, and I said, well, do the trees in your front yard have anything to do with it? And it's the roots coming out. But from a legal perspective, and Tony, you can correct me, our obligation is to protect our equipment, and if the tree comes over from their yard and destroys our equipment, it's not only our fault, we have to fix it, but if we trim her roots and her tree dies, we could have, maybe have to replace her tree.
That's correct.
And it's the same thing when you go into these meter boxes, they're getting crushed, and I kinda almost like to play the game, let's see where it breaks, 'cause if it's on the homeowner's side, oh well. You know, but if it breaks on our side first, and we have to go in there and do all that work, and then the homeowner's on water on top of that, it's, it's a real guessing game. But it, yeah, it can easily, you take a little meter change out, or changing a corpse stop or something, and having that tree there turns into a tremendous amount of work and could be, you know, easily 700, 800, $2,000. And if we kill somebody's big oak tree, um, but it's just, especially in older communities, Gateway Greens is a problem, Pine Crest is a problem, you know, there's other communities that, that when we go in there and see them, to try and do any basic maintenance work, it turns into calling Arbor Tree Service and possibly having to remove or trim the tree, much less than replacing the sidewalk. And when you get into some of these storm drain crossings or the sewer line crossings, yeah, okay, we come in and fix the pipe, but then you have that paving component. So not only fixing utilities, but we're paving roads. And we're getting involved with that Gateway Greens now, 'cause they're repaving. And, you know, we don't want to go in and tear up a street that they just spent money to repave, and the people look at us, so they're leaving a section of it blank till we can get in there and fix it. So the legal aspects of it, it's basically, somebody else is causing the problem, but we're gonna fix it, and we're gonna have to pay to fix it. And of course, you know, it goes deeper, there's just an increase in costs, and unfortunately, the more of this stuff, when we buy a camera, we find it, and we can't really ignore it and walk away from it and, you know, not fix it. And what I was trying to do was warm you up a little bit, because of the next meeting, I was gonna come in with a list of projects, and core of them, well, one of them is, we have in the capital for next year, but it's adding a new high-service pump to the irrigation system. When they went with a jockey pump, which they need for low flows, and you tear your equipment up if you don't have it, but they took one of the main pumps out, so the 10,000 gallon a minute system went to 8,000 gallons a minute. By next April, we're probably gonna need that water drastically to keep up with the demands in the community. So what I'd like to do, and I have some proposals I got from an engineering firm, is we had a three-pronged approach, and, you know, one of them is just to get started right now and design and permitting to put that new pump in, leave the jockey there, and just do a bypass around it, and get that done and installed by next April, so it's ready for the next dry season. When you look at engineering, design, permitting, and the $45,000 pump, it's a $100,000 price tag. But that $100,000 probably buys us a lot of supply to buy us some time, where we don't have to put in a storage tank so quickly, or some other options. It's one of the few things that you can do to get a little breathing room. We have the irrigation wells, we have some money in the budget to do one of our wells, the last one that needs a new pump and motor, but we were also gonna pull some money out, about $20,000, $25,000, to do one of the golf course irrigation wells. And please don't think this is directed at helping the golf course so much, even though it would help us see the productivity of the well, but that water could also be used by a gateway, and we could send the water this direction if it works, but I'm trying to keep that permit alive. Trying to get a water use permit for a shallow well like that is almost impossible now. So, and there may be times of the year where we could supply the golf course with it, and other times, we can use it to blend with the saltier deep well. And that was on my list, and it's about $20,000. And I've talked to the golf course, and said, if this works out, you know, we would enter into a contract with you, and you'd be paying your fees like anybody else, but it's an exploratory.
I think, Chris, with that, we have, we have to run additional lines.
The only additional line we have is everything on the wells right now. I have maps, everything, if you'd like to see them moves toward the golf course, a simple valve would take care of that, a piece of pipe running from the edge.
But we are connected, we are connected to those.
The unknown is the condition of that line.
Right, but we are connected to the wells, right? So it's just a matter of refurbishing or updating? We wouldn't have to do a whole lot of digging and tying anything in with those, right?
No, and really, at the golf course well, if we got that well operational, then we could pressure test that line to the well and fill it up and see what kind of condition it is and if it's usable or not. But I, I just want to keep the permits going, and if we can get usable quantity out of those wells, no matter where it goes, it's advantageous that that's supplied right here.
Mr. Guy, here.
Chris, hearing all of these dollar amounts are being thrown around, I can't but help, help but wondering whether these new water rates that I'm seeing are gonna be adequate.
Well, we, we certainly hope so, and one, one thing I did is I put together, and this was from the rate case, our projected operating budget, and one thing that we did do is we built a 15% R and R contribution into each one of those rates. So there's water, sewer, and irrigation, and set up a dedicated rate. And as you see, I mean, from this, you know, we'll be, basically, monthly R and R contribution will be $61,000 to $70,000 over the next four or five years. So when you're putting, putting that kind of money in on a monthly basis, we'll be building up quite a war chest. And one of my suggestions today was, and just put the board on notice so we can move that direction, I'd like to move about a quarter million dollars out of the utility reserves, which is approaching 2 million, and move it out this month to address these projects and about a $75,000 maintenance, where I see shortfall if we're gonna continue working at this pace. But with the R and R, that we would be getting back, probably within three to five months, that quarter million dollars would be restocked into what we're taking out. So by the time the, the new fiscal year starts and the new rates are in effect, and we pulled that quarter million dollars out, three months later, it would be back to the original.
But we're now on the three utilities standing up. We're use, the potable, and the wastewater. Pulling these funds out, are we pulling them out? We're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. They're coming out of the applicable utility, so if we have a water problem, or a wastewater problem like we have with our Fairway Isles, that's coming out of the reserve in the wastewater side, not the water or the irrigation.
Well, that's, no one knows, because all those funds were blended.
Co-mingle.
Including the connection fees and put into one account, and until we pass the new rate case, and Steve Lins working on those dedicated accounts coming from irrigation, water, and sewer.
How they're gonna be assigned?
Right, but right now, it's one big pot of money, and you know, we could go back and look at connection fees.
Well, we've been, we've been looking.
We better be looking at those in anticipation of these negative expenses coming out, because
the first thing to do is to take and divvy up that 2 million, and put it 700, 700, 600, then find out it need to be 800, 800, 400.
Right.
We need to know that before we make that allocation, 'cause once we make that allocation, it's pretty well done.
And it would probably be, would just reflect what that allocation is on the revenues, the water, wastewater, and irrigation, and what you find is the line shares comes from water and wastewater. But that'll, that'll change with the new rates, because if we go from the 30 cents a thousand to 50 cents a thousand.
Especially on the irrigation.
The irrigation will, will become a real player in there, will become self-supporting. The other thing, when we were talking about inventory, we put a list together, and we're doing price comparison and shopping, and I think our total right now sits at $50,000.
And that's, that's general?
And you think that it's, that's expensive, but when you get into one of these big lift stations and you need a motor starter, you know, you better have 1,800, $20, $200 in your pocket to buy one. And, and the last thing was, it would be just $75,000 for into the general maintenance on the wastewater side, and you know, for those maintenance activities we're doing.
Well, it sounds like you, you know, we can't just close a blind eye. Sounds like you've discovered a lot of things that need repairs, and they just need to be addressed, so.
And we don't want to slow down what we're doing in any sense. I mean, they're out there working hard every day, and unfortunately, the more you put a camera in a hole, and the more you look at things, the more you find, and.
Yes, that's definitely the case.
But the risk of Fairway Isles is to have a car go down into a, a hole. Now, I mean, heavy trucks go up and down there, you name it. That's one of those heavy trash trucks?
It was, it, that, and that came in on a customer complaint for a sewer backup, and we came into the, on the customer's side and went all the way through. When we got to our side, we, you know, we were all clear, it's on their side, and well, let's push through, go through, go down and, and look at the connection to the sanitary sewer, and as soon as we got within a foot of it, you'd be, what is that?
So the sand's rattling out into the sanitary?
Where it was 45 days, it's right there.
And it's going downstream with the water carrying it?
Her line.
Plugging off the, the customer downstream, that's how we found out about it.
The part of it is, there's a giant oak tree there, a very old oak tree, and when you look at her line, whenever we go into a customer line, we have to turn on water, and it should just be a straight shot through, right through. As the camera's going down, you can see the water. When her water's coming through, it's doing the lazy river, 'cause it's so compromised in like 10 different places. And she's fine, she understands that she's got a 3, $4,000 bill to go in there and cut that line. But when we got to our side, it was, it was fine, and then we just kept pushing, and when we went out to check the connection, that's where we.
Well, when we went to the house and opened the cleanout, you could hear the water pouring in to the sewer.
Oh, yeah, we had it, we had it. And once, and once we saw that, we opened up manholes, and you could go from one end, and it's just, you know, nice normal flow, then you go to the other end of that break, and it's, it's a river going by, just pouring through.
Have any of these people considered going ahead and removing their trees? Have, have, have there been any?
The homeowner, I'd say, the homeowner offered to, when we do the repair, to let us use her front yard as a road, you know, partial roadway, if we help take care of that tree.
There's no indication that tree caused the problem in the middle of the street?
No, I don't.
None at all? That's a, I think it's totally defamation.
No, but her line is, is, I mean, it's not broken infiltration-wise, but it's, it's just compressed. There's no doubt that it needs to be repaired.
And we tell people out there about near the line, and you're gonna have to replace the line from the meter to your house because it's your property and the tree caused it. And by the way, the tree's still growing, so it'll happen again, and they're like, I'll replace the line. They have, don't even want to talk about their tree or getting rid of their tree. I mean, a few people might.
That is fairly, fairly common, and especially in Pinewood Lakes, I have three or four people that have, where we have a water break, and they call us, we got a break. We go out there, it's, it's PDC side, and they just, we'll just fix it, we'll just keep fixing it. Multiple times, they're not interested in taking the tree out.
Mrs. Blair, yeah, my question is for the attorney.
Mr. Ray.
If the tree is causing a problem, couldn't we go to the resident and tell them they have to cross the tree down?
No.
Isn't there some way we can do that?
No, as Chris mentioned, and I have, one of my more memorable memorandums is on tree roots and liability, I call it.
And limbs.
Limbs, both. I mean, we, we, there is absence of statutory authority or requirement for them to have liability for roots that travel over their property into our property and affect our facilities. There's no liability on their part for the tree roots that cross over. We have the ability to trim the tree roots and tree branches that encroach onto our property, but we have, but we have exposure that if we trim it to such an extent that the tree dies resulting from that trimming, then we have to replace the tree. But no, we don't have the ability. Now, could we erect tree root barriers at, at the easement line or the property just before? Yes, but they're not, they don't last, and they're not always that successful, tree root barriers, but no. That's just to stay the law in Florida right now.
Yeah, thank you.
So Chris, with, with the due diligence in these areas, and you're talking about really materials, and even some vendors, I know, kind of in our discussions, you've got a staffing philosophy where you, you're trying to bring people on that specific skills to address some of these issues that we've had to bill out in the past at inflated rates or just rates period. In, in these cases, with what you've talked about today, is there staff consideration that you would need to continue to, you know, address these issues at the frequency that they're, that they're happening? And is there a potential to, you know, manage some of this internally if we had the right, the right staff, as opposed to going out and playing, you know, vendor cost? Is there, is there staff consideration, and in that consideration, is there some cost saves by doing this in-house, or no, the, the specialization, we'd never be able to either manage it in-house or even find someone to hire?
Well, right now, we are, we're looking at picking up another, you know, utility person, you know, that can work across the board, and as we look at a lot of these storm drains that are sinking, the ones that need to be brought back up, and pads out on the soccer field, and we've got some good pipe people, got some good electricians, we needed somebody, and we buy a little compact cement mixer and put it on the back of the truck and go fix these sidewalks ourselves when they have that issue, you know, and cut, cut the root out. Because we had four of them fixed in Stony Brook, and, you know, decent contractor, it was $2,600. You know, for $1,000 worth of cement, and you know, a day's worth of labor, we could have had somebody frame it up and do that ourselves. And these drain boxes that are falling and collapsing, as traditionally, you see hundreds of them, you know, just bringing those back up, you know, put an extension on and be able to report or put brick around it, is a huge need, a maintenance need.
But is there, I guess the question is, outside of what you have today, if you look at the expenditures that, that you projected, is there, are you projecting also, do you need to have staff consideration, either increase in, you know, a specific headcount or a specialty, you know, person coming in? Is that part of your consideration right now?
Oh, that, that is, and the one, the only thing we're really looking at now, because we have the truck, truck, and a new trailer and a vehicle, is, is next year, and in the budget, we'll probably look at getting a small loader, or a small excavator, or some of these drain boxes where it's so hard, and a specialized cutting piece, so that we can just go in there and, you know.
Our problem is, we get down deep, we get into all kinds of issues with safety and trench boxes and manhole boxes and.
And this liability that goes along with.
Huge liability.
De-watering?
We, do watering, we don't want any, we don't want to touch.
Sanit, sanitation and sewer?
No way. Set it down.
But that, again, even if we get a decent price on it, that's something we found, and you know, that's a $30,000 bill probably, or right in that ballpark regardless. And on our maintenance side, I mean, we had 50,000 water, 50,000 sewer, 50,000 irrigation, so, you know, that one repair, we have half, half the budget in that area for the year.
And this is just the beginning.
Yeah, well, and, and I think the 15% is gonna go a long way and provide that steady cash flow, you know, through the rate to allow us to fix those things. It's just, I don't want to interrupt the, interrupt the progress we're making, and also that irrigation well, I think by next April, to have that in place is gonna, you know, we've moved around the demand with some of the subdivisions and gotten them off, but, you know, we're just growing.
Luckily, that issue, so far, we haven't really needed it. It gives enough grain.
And we also, you know, we have all the, all the pressure sensors, Kenny will tell you, they've installed throughout the system, so we can pretty much look out there and find out what's going on when.
You know, what's killing us also, 'cause we can't do any lake work, can't do any sewer cleaning work, 'cause it's all full of water.
It's a double-edged sword.
And if we come to June, and those lakes are right now at controlled elevation, we ain't got problems. No place for the water to go.
But that's, that's all I have, and I'll bring that project list back to you, and request to move the money out of reserves, and I think in three months, you know, going, once the rate goes up, that money will be right back in there, so it's not a long-term hit. And same thing, if we're moving forward, then that money we have in the capital to do that pump next year, which is 45,000, you know, that money will be available.
Kenny, when will we know when we're going to have the contractors do Fairway Isles?
Hopefully, hopefully within my next week.
My next week?
Get contractors to get here to look at, to, to.
Just to look at it?
Yeah, just to get them in here. He's my, you know, say, my main contractor just, I mean, he, he, he put a high bid in because he's not sure where, where it might go, but he just.
Well, he's, half his bid is de-watering.
And, and, yeah, de-watering, and it's right in front of a, two residences where it's going to block their driveways completely. And we're going to have to do something with that, uh, to where that break actually is going on. Well, we've got a, like, a swell in the road and it's right in front of a residence, two actually.
You have to temper, you know, rock out the yards or sheet pile over them because, you know, we have to have access in and out of those cul-de-sacs.
You may have to put a rock on the driveway to the south, or the yard to the south. To the north, I don't know how you're going to get around, you've got a fire hydrant there, it's in the way.
And resaw that when we're done, you know, rest.
Oh, you'll have to resaw and everything.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
Huge job.
A pretty sleek and job to work, I mean, if it's feasible and we can get it done.
Well, the other thing too is, basically, it's, it's a risk job. It's unknown, nobody knows what you're going to get into and get into. Maybe what we do is go and work with this guy with, what, B and J? See if he'll go along with the time and materials with the not to exceed, uh, X. And when we're there, we see it, we redefine the scope to extend X. Because right now, he's putting all the risk on us. And that's where, that's how you get to seventy-seven thousand real quick. But I, I understand what he's doing and if I'm a contractor, I wouldn't touch that sucker with a ten-foot pole unless it was on time materials. Because you don't know what you got yet.
Oh, yeah.
And he gave us that, I don't want to do it bid.
He says, you, I don't want to do it, but if I do, you're going to pay me through the nose, yeah.
Yeah, and I may even still say no at that price.
But our problem is, we, we can't sit here and do nothing because we have knowledge that it's a problem. And if it's in an emergency nature, something happens out there, we're going to have four, five, or fifty homeowners coming after us. But you guys knew about it, didn't declare it an emergency and did nothing. So we have that against us too.
Every day the bill piles up because all that water that's pouring into that system, we're paying them by the thousand gallons to treat it over at Waste, the wastewater plant, so every minute that's running.
Well, it, it exfiltrates out when it gets down to the end of the street.
It's one more.
That's all we have for the, for the good news on the utility side. Up, up here, the pool's coming along, it should be wrapped up by the end of the month with tile. And, uh, we're going to come in behind that and do some painting and make a few other improvements. And just upgrade the facility with the new lighting and, uh, the adherence is a hundred percent better. And we have a few ends to tie up over the soccer complex with some painting and a counter. But all the bathrooms are done in there and the new commodes and sinks and the auto flush. And, uh, with that, that's all I have. Oh, and Kenny, you had one other issue that's going to be coming up, it's Pelican Preserve.
Yeah, Pelican Preserve, uh, we are having our meeting, uh, Tuesday of next week at three o'clock. Uh, it was, say, in the, was in the Magnolia Room and now it's at the Clubhouse. We met, we met with the CANS for each one of those communities and we met with the county staff. Uh, they are going to be attending, um, with, uh, Cecil Hunter Rass, his staff, we know them today. They're going to be attending, uh, this meeting with, uh, we set up through Carol Boraki, uh, for the odor issue in the Pelican Preserve. So that meeting is next Tuesday at three.
What are we going to hear?
Same, pretty much the same thing you heard last year. Uh, uh, there, we've had some, two really big developments that I've just recently discovered. One was that Lenar has completely changed out those valves, all the new houses that have come on, especially in Pastoya and all through up Prado. Last year, we went in and changed two of the worst houses with the worst odor issue in the, in the back bathrooms. We went in there and changed out those riser, uh, the, the push, push valves, cleared the problem. Haven't had an issue since. Apparently, the home builder was paying attention because all of the new homes that come in do not have those push valve, uh, and PEX tubing lines, which is one unit. And there is no odor issues reported out of any of the new houses with that. And we've looked at a lot of the water usage, like, uh, the actual amount of R, RAMI system allows us to do that. Uh, and it's, you know, we've got some pretty good historical information. We did have, say, we did go in and, we did in good faith, go in there and change out those lines and it worked. It, it was expensive, but it worked. And we, I did, uh, one week, a thirty day, sixty day, ninety day and one year follow-up for all of that. And I, they did not report water or an odor at all in any situation since we did that. So we gave them a viable solution. It was, it was a matter of, we had one resident in there that did do the change over and still had the smell. We came to find out that they have a water conditioner that's stripping the disinfectant from the water before it even gets into the house. So they had a reoccurring, uh, issue.
Tell me about the wells from which the water draws.
Uh, they're, uh, say, uh, that, they come from, it comes from the, uh, the lower Hawthorne and Sandstone Hock first.
I'm sorry.
The lower Hawthorne and Sandstone Hock first. And they're, it's mixed together from the green meadows and the, uh, Corkscrew water. They're blended together and that's what we get. It is hard water, uh, it is aligned, they go, they go through line softening process. They, they said, we met with them today, uh, it was, say, was it RO that they go through?
Their green meadows.
Green meadows just went through a big, huge expansion and they went to RO with, uh, ion change. And those two from that and Corkscrew are blended together and that's what we get. Their source water is from the Sandstone and the lower Hawthorne Hock first.
Is that the same source of water for the rest of Gateway?
That's what we use for our reuse water.
And that, in that, and we have, that's, yes, for our, for our irrigation system, yes, there's a single line. Very good treatment.
Uses that for irrigation also. That's where the Pelican Preserve irrigation water comes from the same Hock first.
Yep.
How soon will Arborwood Phase Three be going to create the loop into Pastoya that can minimize this problem?
Whenever they start on that community, twenty-one.
Heard anything from them?
Twenty-one.
I believe they're still.
Well, they're going to put utilities in far before they start building. Danny, have you heard anything on Arborwood? Any, seen any plans?
But, but, I say, on Pastoya, on that line, we have no issue. There, all the new houses, all the new residents with these new valves, the valving system that they put in, they have no odor issue whatsoever.
If, if complication, Kenny, the valving system is inside the residence?
Oh, yeah, it's a resident, it's a residential plumbing issue. Uh, but it, it, it's those, we, we, we seem to think, I really seem to think it's those valves. When those valves are changed out, uh, they were. And one of the residents that we did do in, in Matarita was a seasonal, they were gone. So we were really itching to find out what happened when they left for the, for the summer and came back. And when they did, they came back and everything was good. So, but that, finding out that, that, that the valves have, they're all new assemblies. Those push, push and pull valves are gone. All the new ones are, are, they kind of mimic what we did, stainless steel braided, uh, isolation valves. That is what they have changed out. And, oh, I would say, that's more of a detail, but that, that, that to me is a major development, that we were not aware that they've come back.
But, but these issues are on our water lines, not City Fort Myers line?
Oh, no, no, it's on, it's on, it's on this side.
Are they having any issues at the city, like their side?
They, they not reported any, not, not.
Because theirs is all built out, for the most part.
For the most part, yes. And say, I'm going over that at the meeting. Part of that, part of one of the issues is that, you know, we're so far away from building out in there that, uh, that is, I believe, one of the, uh, underlying factors of how we deal with it.
Ken Joke Shack has a question.
Yeah, Ed, my house has those nylon push set-off valves in it and the PEX tubing. And I don't, I've never had a problem. That's city water there and I don't know anybody in my community that's had a problem.
On that one, I have, I have probably a hundred homes that have the dual sinks. And I've been in there when, I've, I've, I've been watching them from the time that they break the ground to the time that somebody moves in there and I've taken photographs of it. So when you go into that dual sink, which is where ninety-five percent of my odor complaints come from, from one master bathroom sink, there'll be a dual sink. The line for both of those things comes through, one line splits, goes through those valves and into the flosses and there's a dual sink. There'll be a smell here, there will not be a smell there. And I've seen this fifty, sixty, seventy times. That sink, fine, no issue. I open up the first draw and pull the sample out of there and it's smell. I mean, it, pull it out, refill that cup, smell, it's gone. So that, that, it, it's so hit and miss, you never know which, uh, it, it's just the nature of what, there's several factors that are involved in that. But it's basically what I covered last year. I think a lot, and this year a lot, we have a lot, a lot more people, especially with Prado. So you get a lot of, uh, say, being Carol had set this meeting up probably two months ago when she had gotten back from her vacation. We've been planning on it, uh, setting it up so we, because we know we have so many more people in there now that we can get them all in there and give them all this information. So, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else, please, Chris? Thank you, gentlemen. It will move us to, probably, after our adjournment of the workshop and then move in and resume the meeting. And, uh, we've already done the call to order and pledge allegiance, so I'll just leave that as done.
What can I just ask one follow-up question?
Sure.
Chris, with your recommendation to pull the two-hundred-and-fifty K from the reserves, what is your plan on that? Where, is that something you're going to formally bring?
Oh, yeah, I'll formally bring in, I have the list of projects already and the amounts.
But that's this, you want to do it during this fiscal year, right? Like, oh, yeah.
Soon after March, I'll be in the meeting, yes, I'll be on the agenda with those list of projects and also give you the exact repayment time on it.
Which do you want to have that breakdown?
Um, should have it at the next meeting.
We can get that as well.
Yeah, for the carry forward.
Okay. It brings us to item two, which is the storm drain cleaning and inspection.
And this is an item that I, uh, was bringing up at the last meeting. For that, we approved the contract with Matt Power and Associates at two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars approximately, two oh one. And that left a balance in that budgeted of a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, seven ninety-nine. At that meeting, Mr. Tinkle made the motion, we were disgusted about moving a hundred thousand dollars to additional storm drain cleaning and gateway greens. And I am moving forward to see if Matt Power can give prices on that. And, uh, I'm going to ask two other contractors that bid too, who are on the low side for pricing for that project. However, there was some discussion with the board and I wasn't clear on it in a previous meeting where they talked about what they were going to do with that balance of what was bid in the three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And part of it was, well, is it earmarked for storm drain cleaning or storm conveyance cleaning? And, uh, right now, we, uh, we would not have any of that money to use, well, fifty thousand of it for conveyance cleaning. That project is advertised this week in the paper, so we'll have some bids back next month. But, um, I'm not sure which way the board wanted to go, if they wanted to allocate that money as it was voted on at the hundred thousand to gateway greens and look at the, uh, carry forward money for conveyance cleaning or how we were going to pursue it.
That was my recollection, when we had this discussion about two months ago, uh, we had all kinds of varying numbers on what the scope of that total deal was going to be. The three fifty was clear, it was for storm sewer cleaning. And then I think Doug came up with the idea of that we had, because the conveyance needs to be done likewise. Doug came up with the idea and I totally agree that the, uh, carryover from twenty eighteen, which at that time was being guessed around four hundred, four hundred and five, something like that, thousand, that that would be used. Right now, based upon the engineer's previous estimate, uh, one-twenty, I think was the number for the conveyance. So I would be all for using, first of all, getting the prices from these other bidders to find out what that gateway greens segment is going to be. That might only spend a hundred and a hundred and fifty, and if it does, then there's fifty thousand that can be used for the conveyance and we only have to rob seventy thousand out of that, uh, four-hundred thousand carryover or carry forward. So I'm, I'm all for going that route.
Does anybody know what the carry forward from eighteen actually is?
At the last meeting, Steve said it hadn't changed. At the last meeting, Stephen said it hadn't changed. So I'm taking that it's still in that four-hundred-thousand-dollar range.
Yeah, but, you know, range, uh, range, range.
I don't, when's he going to, I don't know when he's going to have his final deal, I, I would have thought it would have been.
I don't have it with me, but you will have it for the first meeting in March.
I, I have, I have four-hundred-and-eighty.
Four-eighty.
Uh, was the rollover from twenty eighteen.
For some reason, I have four oh five, but anyway, we're in the ballpark.
This was, this was eleven fifteen, I have, from eleven fifteen, I have that number being four-eighty.
That's what we discussed.
It's quite a difference.
Yeah, that's what, well, I hope he's right. But irregardless, we, we're talking about the fact that, uh, the engineer's estimate is one-twenty. So there is more than enough money in that fund to be able to cover it.
And I understand that, I just think that we know how bad the conveyances are. And I think, I'd just like, like to reprioritize that the cleaning of the flowways, uh, all, I think, from the ORCA, study in his presentation, we know that those, uh, board flowways need to be cleaned. And that to me is a higher priority because we've got to get the water out of all of Gateway, not, and I understand.
Higher priority if you don't live, you live in a community that yours clean.
Well, not all of them.
You've had your large ones, we haven't had our large ones. My deal is, my deal is we do both. We've got plenty of money to do both. I, I don't know, you won't know why there's a discussion. Do them both, we've got to do them both, that's our job, that's our responsibility.
And I agree with you on that, I'm not saying we shouldn't do gateway greens, I'd just like to see the flowways done first and then.
Well, they can go ahead and do the flowway, but my point is they can both be done concurrently. We got the money, we got the money to do them concurrently.
If they can't be done concurrently, that's fine. If, if one, if due to resources, we have to choose, then we need to prioritize. And that's it, we don't have to make that, have that debate today.
Yeah, I don't think we have that issue.
The, the ideal situation would be to run them concurrently. And we, with your, with the, what's the leftover fifty K or whatever that is, my only reserve about automatically earmarking that for, um, uh, for the conveyance cleaning would be, I don't know what my degree of confidence is that we won't run into something, you know, something else either within those cleanings or something, you know, that happens afterward.
We already ran it, like.
So I would almost think about, since we have dedicated that money for that specific line item, that we hold that fifty and, um, you know, continue to earmark that.
For the cleaning.
For the cleaning, uh, in, in the case of we run into something that's, that needs it and then we pull the, the conveyance cleaning out of the, uh, out of the, the rollover.
What are your opening bids?
Third week, next month.
Third week, so we've got plenty of time. And Stephen's going to be here at the first meeting, which is what, the seventh or something like that? He should be able to tell us what kind of number we got to assure that.
And I thought that we didn't, we didn't limit it to storm drain cleaning in the budget. I thought we made it storm system cleaning so that we could, we could use it for flowways or other things that were involved in the storm system, the drainage system.
When I made the motion to put it in the budget a couple of years ago, that was not my intent. Mine was storm sewer cleaning because at that time, that was the only thing we had knowledge of. We were not aware of all these other issues. We hadn't had the ORCA report or anything else when we made that decision.
But when we, when we did the budget just this last year, I thought we changed the language so that we could use it for any part of the storm system.
We get up until November meeting, which time we had the other discussion. But my point is, it's all, it's, it's a waste of time. We have the money, let's get them both done.
Yeah, we'll bring those bids forward to you and then in the future, um, maybe be a little bit more, um, add some better definitions or make sure that language is real clear and then.
If we need to.
Yeah, well, the other, the other thing too is the storm, the flowway cleaning that we're talking about doing is not complete. It's not complete because some of them we're not doing because we've got some land acquisition issues. So there's more to come on flowway cleaning.
Yeah, like the other side of the interstate from Tree Line over.
And I'm still holding my breath on, we clean that flowway that throttles, uh, gateway to Pelican Preserve. And that mess right there at Pastoya, where we have that little island that sits there. I have no idea what that's going to have or any impact on flow going on downstream. That, if that's a restriction, we're going to have to go in there and clean out that debris that's in that, that flowway.
It's one big rock.
Yeah, we better get, listen.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
We have, um, your storm water system repair maintenance and storm water system pipe and catch basin cleaning. And we have, um, I, boy, I have five-hundred thousand and one and a hundred twenty-four thousand and eleven. Is that what you, this is my budget?
Yeah, that's a, I think that's just the line of underwater management that I don't have from here.
It was storm, it's three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And the way we had it labeled was, um. Storm sewer, pipe cleaning and catch basin cleaning.
Okay.
Storm water system, pipe and catch basin cleaning, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And then, um, also, which I believe was discussed, a part of that four-eighty, you guys had moved the hundred-and-twenty into the operating budget for the storm water management plan. So that was taken.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mark.
Uh, if, if I may, this is a subject that is very.